Good evening, everyone. Could we please rise and do the Pledge of Allegiance? Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. For roll call, we're going to be a little bit short-staffed. Samantha Stormer and Lisa Mesmer are both going to be absent, and Larry will be a little bit late, but we're expecting him, so we have a quorum. Okay, get an approval of the agenda?
Still move. Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. All right, we're to point of recognition. John Carey and PAT, are you guys going together?
Yeah.
Great, all right.
So with the gracious permission of the Beach family here tonight, and they have award of their family members here to support him, thank goodness, we will be sharing Chase Beach's success story during our presentation this evening, and we'll be further elaborating on the role early intervention played in Chase's success through parents, his teachers, and through early childhood. And so Chase, this is your present as your principal. You have done such an amazing job of taking care of yourself and made such a difference. Congratulations and keep up the good work. And then also, in partnership with the Magic House, we'd like to present your family with a year free membership to the Magic House, so you can continue to grow, learn, and have so much fun together.
And I'll wait. And I'll wait. All right, standing committee reports. Anyone have any committee meetings?
I went to finance. That was my first one, so I soaked it all in. And we reviewed a lot, really, of what was reviewed at the last board meeting with Marshall. And you made a really good suggestion if you want to talk about that.
Oh, well.
As far as transparency and, I mean, I don't know, you know.
Yeah, we just mentioned that, you know, in view of the cash reserve that we now have, that we, I thought it was important that we do a year end for, when we post that figure, that we also put nearby what the year end totals were, to reflect the fact that that does not mean that there's going to be oodles of money in the bank at the end of the year. So that was my suggestion.
That's a great suggestion.
Thank you.
Anything else?
No, no, that was the only committee I, so I read it.
Okay, Peggy?
I did not have any. Our policy is, has been emailing some odds and ends from our last meeting, but we did not have a meeting in May. We did not have a communication meeting.
I would like to also add that, having attended two of the concerts in the last week, both at Oakville Senior High and at Bernard the other night, that, man, we have got some music programs to be incredibly proud of. And the Oakville Senior High need not worry, because the kids they get coming in are fantastic. So we're going to be blessed with good music for a lot of years to come.
Yeah, they do well.
I do happen to know for a fact that Bernard Middle School won first place overall in the competition that they were in, in Indiana over the weekend. And yeah, which was a big deal. And you can see why, because we both listened to it, and it's unbelievable that 12, 13, and 14-year-olds are playing music like that.
That's awesome. All right, I had a facility committee meeting, and basically talked about what we're going to be doing over the summer. We've got a lot of air conditioning work going on, ceiling work, bleachers at Melville, Melville High School, looking at baseball field drainage, and also there's scoping underway in some preliminary pricing, looking at some options for baseball fields. But those are still pretty early on. And that was it. So we're up to five action items by consent. Anyone want to make a motion to?
Oh, go ahead.
I motion to approve. Action items A, B, E.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. And we're back to you guys.
Thank you for the opportunity to tell the story of Melville Early Childhood tonight. I'm Ann Westbrook, Director of Early Childhood.
And I'm Erica Anderson, Cornelia, Parents' Teachers.
And Early Childhood is the umbrella that encompasses the following programs: the Diagnostic Department, which evaluates children ages three through kindergarten entrance for special education eligibility and services; preschool programming for general and special education, serving students ages three through kindergarten entrance; itinerant special education services, which are non-classroom special education services delivered in the community for children ages three through kindergarten entrance, and?
And Parents' Teachers, which is an evidence-based parent education family program and family engagement model, serving families throughout pregnancy until our children enter kindergarten. And so the Beach family, previously introduced during recognition as just one out of 570 families comprised of 799 children that we serve here in the Melville School District in our program. And although 35% of our families are meeting the DSC approved high-needs characteristics, tonight we want to highlight how early intervention can impact the life of a child. Chase Beach was crawling at seven months, walking at nine months, and on target with his developmental milestones. However, in the area of language development, he was making no attempt to communicate verbally at 12 months. Mom states Chase would "go, go, go" constantly, but it concerned me he didn't babble at all. The Beaches had concerns about Chase's development and requested an evaluation with First Steps. And First Steps is Missouri's early intervention system that provides services to families with children birth to three years of age with disabilities or developmental delays. At that time, Chase didn't qualify for services, and the family wanted additional support, so they enrolled in Parents' Teachers. Parents' Teachers provides personal visits, group connections, developmental screenings, and resources to families in our district. Ms. Beach commends her parent educator for being a huge support and connecting her to the resources. The parent educator informed her they would monitor Chase's development and could request another evaluation with First Steps as soon as three months from the initial evaluation. Mom was unaware this was an option, and credits her parent educator for informing her, and most importantly, for monitoring Chase and identifying when it was an appropriate time to request another evaluation. Chase qualified for speech services through First Steps in September of 2015 at 23 months, and the Beach family continued monthly home visits with their parent educator. I am proud to announce this evening that Melville Parents' Teachers completed 2,649 home visits this year, and we reached our DSC allocation for parent education and screening services for the first time. The last time Melville came close to this many home visits was in 1994, and just a side note, that was the year I graduated from Melville High School right out there on that field. And I just had my 25th reunion on Saturday, so it's been a really long time. Our Parents' Teachers team is made up of qualified parent educators that provide evidence-based information to our families. Ms. Beach states, "My parent educators through the years did such an awesome job and taught me what to look for as a parent, as early intervention is important." And they stayed on top of things by monitoring Chase's development. I love that PAT listened to me as a parent. Parents' Teachers affiliates provide at least two years of services to families with children between prenatal and kindergarten entry in accordance to our essential requirements. The Beach family had another son in February of 2016 and continued monthly home visits with both children. The Beach family will exit from our PAT program at the end of this program year after four years of enrollment with completion of services. Mom states, "This truly shows how teamwork can change the outcome for our children. If we didn't get connected to all these resources, I wonder where he would even be today."
So Chase transitioned from Missouri First Steps to Melville Early Childhood, or MEC, with the Diagnostic Department in the fall of 2016. Now referrals to the Diagnostic Department are made when there are concerns around the child's development, and the diagnostic team meets with parents and any other service providers to determine if an evaluation is warranted, conducts the testing, and then determines if a child meets Missouri eligibility criteria for special education. Here is an example of Chase's language at age two. Yeah, can we count, say one?
One.
What comes next? Two?
Two.
Three?
Four.
And here is a picture of Chase on his very first day of preschool enrollment. Chase met eligibility criteria for an individualized education plan for classroom instruction and related services. MEC has 14 inclusive classrooms at seven district locations. Currently, preschool enrollment is at 336 students. Program-wide, MEC serves 386 students, and this includes students who receive itinerant services in the community or receive special education services in other districts. The Early Childhood Program is funded by the Missouri Early Childhood Special Education Grant, or ECSE Grant, and it follows the state model of four half-days of special education programming. Students can qualify to attend for two, three, or four half-days per week. Now, our funding does stipulate special education caseload numbers, class sizes, and how many tuition-based peer models can be enrolled in integrated classrooms. Chase met IEP subgroup criteria, and program-wide, 68% of our students qualify for an IEP. Of students who are enrolled in our programs, 20% qualify for free and reduced lunch, 43% qualify for an IEP, 13% are English language learners, and we have 11 languages spoken at the preschool. Chase also received related services of occupational therapy and speech-language therapy. MEC has a total of 17 therapists on staff, 18 teachers, and 24 paraprofessionals. 82% of our certified staff have a master's degree or multiple advanced degrees. Due to his progress, Chase was able to transition from a smaller early childhood special education classroom of around 12 students to a larger general education classroom of around 18 students his year before kindergarten. This model of classroom has more tuition-based peers and more access to the general education curriculum. And the five curricular areas are on the above screen. The Early Childhood Curriculum is aligned to the Missouri Early Learning standards, and the curriculum is delivered in a constructivist approach. So this is where students construct their own learning through play-based, hands-on experiences. We do standards-based grading, and that's collected and communicated to parents three times a year through report cards, and the data above is taken from students who scored at a Level III or meeting expectations during the Term I and Term II of their pre-kindergarten school year. And that's the year before kindergarten entrance. And Term III is currently in the process of ending, so we do not yet have the end-of-the-year data points to share with you at this time. Mom reports Chase was speaking in sentences within one year of starting services at MEC. Mom states the change within Chase was amazing, and he wouldn't be where he is today without their help. Here is a sample of Chase's language today. Hello?
Hi. Hey.
How old are you?
Five.
Yeah, what's your name?
Five and a half. Chase.
You are five and a half, and your name is Chase. Good job. Hey, where do you go to school?
I, a preschool.
Mm-hmm. What's the name of your preschool?
Duncan.
Duncan. Awesome. What's your favorite thing to do?
Um, go to a park and play games.
The vision of MEC is where lifelong learning begins. The mission of MEC is working in partnerships with the community and family to provide an educational foundation for children. The Beach family is just one of the many, many success stories from early intervention. We believe MEC aligns perfectly with the Melville portrait of a graduate and helps to prepare students for the next step in their educational and their life journey. Thank you again for the opportunity tonight.
Thank you. Great job. Probably worth bringing up that you guys won an award for the state of Missouri. I'll just say best large early childhood education, right?
Yes, yes, the MSBA Award, the Future Builders Award, for Early Childhood Program of the Year in the Large School District category.
So you guys have got a, you're acknowledged as being an extremely good program statewide, so thank you for all the great work you do. We all know how important early childhood is and really appreciate all your efforts, so thanks.
Well, thank you. Thank you for your support.
Thank you.
Okay, we're up to the Education Plus report.
So Paul Ziegler, he's Executive Director of Education Plus, coming to do a little bit of report.
Thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. I know it's a busy time of year, so Chris and I, or Dr. Gaines and I, tried to arrange this a couple different times, and this was the earliest we could get it, so thank you. I don't know if it's going to come, oh, there we go. Wanted to talk about who we are at Education Plus. We're 53 school districts that represents over 500 schools, 29,000-plus teachers, and almost 300,000 students. To give you a context, that's about a third of the state. When you think of population, we have about 900,000 students in the state. We do three things really at Education Plus. We provide business services, learning services, and then network and advocacy. When you think of our business services, one of the big things we do is cooperative purchasing. Cooperative purchasing, we do that through two different ways. The AEP-A, which is a nationally bid contract that we use with 26 other states, where we bid at a national level products and services, and then award those contracts locally. And then we also do local bids, because we know if there's some products that don't have a national presence, that people, kind of like furniture, we have several local furniture bidders. People like to see the furniture, touch the furniture, so we try to do that with some local vendors as well as some other things. One of the other things we do through our business services is Pe卡s. This was 2017. We just ended our 2018 year, but we gave back almost $400,000 through rebates in Pe卡s. I know you all participate in a Pe卡s program as well. This is just one that we do with some of the districts here. We also have MoReap. You're probably familiar with, when we go to post jobs online, we actually own that software called, that we call MoReap here, and we actually sell that to other states throughout the United States. Vermont, Connecticut, New Mexico, Arizona, a couple others. They actually buy that software and use the same service that we have here in Missouri, and that we own at EdPlus, to utilize for their job posting. And then comp data. We collect data from schools in real-time for salaries, number of positions, different things that go along with our staffing patterns, and provide that back to our districts in the fall, as opposed to waiting a full year and being a year delayed with the DSC information coming out. That helps, especially in the job market like we have right now, where it's very competitive. People want to know that they're being competitive and know what kind of expectations they have for their employees. From a learning perspective, we had over 7,300 people attend conferences, workshops, and other learning activities last year. We did that through 152 professional development events, 86 customized events. That's where we go in and work directly with a school or a school district on some initiative they have. And then we had four major conferences: METC, Character in Action, the Support Staff Academy, which is coming up here in June, and then Alliance St. Louis. From a learning perspective, we have four resources. One, we have our own Education Plus learning staff. They oftentimes do some of that customized PD and actually work to develop our platform each year with our member school districts. We have Character Plus, which is, we're all kind of familiar with the development of character for students. They actually do that, but then they've also branched into social-emotional learning, child-informed, and then restorative practices. We are the St. Louis RPDC Center, which is the Regional Professional Development Center. There's nine of those throughout the state. We are the only one that's not linked to a university. The other eight are linked to some regional university in some capacity, but we're actually also the largest. We anticipate a contract with DSC next year to deliver initiatives will be almost $3 million. That's, represents about 25 full-time equivalents here in the St. Louis area, working with our staff, with our staffs in our school districts in those 53. Then we have the METC, which is the Midwest Education Technology Community. I always thought of it as the conference, because that's what most of us know. We have typically over seven states represented at that conference, and sometimes as many as 2,000 people. But it's actually a community that goes year-round, through Google Hangouts and other activities they do with that group to make sure that we're keeping technology on the forefront throughout the entire year. One thing we're really proud of is the ISTI. That is the International Society of Technology Education. We were the first to be able to certify teachers and staff members throughout the nation. It's actually a worldwide certification. I'm happy to say that three of the first four people ever certified under ISTI in the world were EdPlus employees. So actually, last summer, we provided some training. We had people come from Asia over to here to receive training in this, and we're doing trainings this summer, Springfield, St. Louis, Florida, and I believe one other state in Southeast, where we're sending our folks to train in these ISTI certifications. From a networking collaboration standpoint, we have 30-plus job-alike groups that meet at EdPlus. Some of these are anything from superintendents to nurses to support staff in different capacities, curriculum directors. They meet at EdPlus, some monthly, some quarterly, but they meet there on a regular basis. We provide that meeting space, operate the listserv for them to make sure people are aware of those meetings and handle that. Then also, we provide communication, graphic, and video support for some of our districts that need that. We help in times of crisis if needed, and then also try to provide a structure if the region, much after the Parkland shootings, you know, there was, that tragedy brought out some real emotion in the area, we were able to get school leaders along with police officers or chiefs and sheriffs together to talk about what that's going to look like for our region and how we move forward from that. From an advocacy standpoint, we develop a legislative platform here for the St. Louis region every year, and why that closely resembles what you can see at MSBA or through Missouri Association of School Administrators. It is slightly tweaked, because we know that we have certain needs here in St. Louis that don't always match up perfectly with what we see on a statewide perspective. We typically try to do some kind of interaction with our legislature. Last year, we took a bus trip to the Capitol. Unfortunately, this year it was canceled. It was one of the days, it was scheduled for one of the days, it was nine below. And so many superintendents decided they needed to be back over in their districts and canceled that. I'm sure we'll do one again next year. I also participate in district advocacy events, whether that's several, sometimes several districts get together, do legislative advocacy committees. Sometimes it's county-wide, like Jefferson County, but I participate in those and then also try to help them through that advocacy effort. I also go to Jeff City typically once a week during the session, usually on a Tuesday, to make sure that they're seeing somebody from our region, there with our legislators, kind of to make sure they know we're watching, but also to provide resources, information as legislation comes up that may affect our region. For the Melville School District, you actually had two assistant principals that participated in the Missouri Learning Development Series this year. You had Julie Durham from Trotwine, and then Paul Morris from Beerbaum Elementary. Sue Resch serves on our Executive Professional Academy Board, it has, for quite some time, I believe. And then Janet Altman also serves with that Support Staff Academy Conference Advisory Committee. And again, that's the one that's happening in June. The other thing that we did that was awesome last year is we partnered with you all to put together an English learner conference last fall. It was really well-received. We partnered with DSC, with EdPlus, and Melville. Already plans to do that next year. I think it's selling out kind of quickly. And we decided to kind of give that its own logo. So that's that Elevate logo that was designed by our Communications Department to kind of give it its own place, and we really expect that this will continue for some time as English learners continue to be a focus for not only DSC but for the region as we see more and more immigrants move to the area. From a financial standpoint, anybody that's been on the board here for a while in Melville knows that EdPlus had a spending problem. It's easy, it's easiest way I can say it. We're spending more than we were bringing in for quite some time. Last, it was five years of straight deficit spending, and one year almost of more than a billion dollars in deficit. Anyone that works in school districts or nonprofits knows you can't operate that way. Happy to say this is my second year there. Last year, after my first full year, we had turned that around through the hard work of our staff and some other folks pitching in to do some things, and we actually turned that around to where we had, we generated, we were in the black last year and generated almost $400,000. So that'll help us to build those balances back that have been spent over a period of time, and also begin to build our services to make sure that we're providing the best we can for our districts. And the reason that's important is we're 90 years. It's hard for me to believe that, that the cooperative has been here that long, but we were founded 90 years ago, so we're celebrating our 90th anniversary. So one of the things we had done this year, this was actually done by a school board member at Northwest, where I used to be superintendent, and it is, it depicts all 53 districts with their logo, along with some other points of interest in the St. Louis area. Every time I look at it, I find something new. She did a wonderful job. She was a former art teacher, and it has our history around the outside. And this is for you all. Hopefully you can find someplace to put it, because I think the thing that really depicts well, and Dr. Gaines can speak to this, the strength of our cooperative is all the districts. It's our leading network in cooperating with one another and to do the things that we need to do, and there's never, there's not ever a situation that people aren't willing to lend a hand for the other folks in the region. So, okay, it's worked. So, so again, this was something that, it kind of came, and it worked out, and it's really been something that people have appreciated. So I'm certainly available for any questions, but that is the last that I have.
I guess my only comment is to see how things have improved there, and I think that's a tip of the hat to you, because I have a pretty good idea how tough it is to try and get administrative and advocacy and services, and you guys have done a terrific job with it.
I appreciate that. It's a team effort. I mean, we have a great region, and get them all in in the same direction, we're really powerful.
Yeah, anybody can score the goal. It takes somebody to feed them. Yeah. You guys have done terrific work.
So are all the schools in Missouri eligible to be a part of EdPlus?
Yes and no. So what we did with that, because believe it or not, we do have some charter schools that are members. So what we do is differentiate between the memberships. So we created a 90%, which is an affiliate membership. The reason I say that, the 53 districts that are part of us right now, they're what we consider our owner and our governing districts. By that, if we were to liquidate EdPlus and say we're no longer, there's a building there, we have a cell tower that generates, there's all sorts of things, those assets would be distributed back to those member districts. The people we were bringing in from outside our region that are these affiliate members, they would not be eligible to govern, nor to, if something were ever to be dispersed or things like that. So we created that membership, so anybody in the state could do that. Realistically, what do we see? More recently, Bowling Green has inquired about what would it be to be a member. They're close enough to St. Louis where it's really more reasonable for them to think about coming to St. Louis than it is to Kirksville, whereas the Northeast RPDC Center. So we see some of that on the fringes, but we cover a broad area.
So there is another similar group in Kirksville? Is that what you're?
The RPDC, the DSC arm, that one arm of our learning, there's one of those in Kirksville. The other cooperatives that are similar to us, nobody does the purchasing or the advocacy piece quite the way we do, but there is one in the greater Ozarks. It's called Go CSD. Harken back to our old CSD days, which I still sometimes call a CSD. There's also a Kansas City CSD, and then there's one in the Southwest, and they call it the Southwest Center, kind of down towards Joplin. None of, none of the other organizations do purchasing or have some of the business services, like the REAP and the other, but they try to create a network of their schools in that area to create the power of that network.
And you said you've made MoReap available to other states, right?
And we actually sell, it's free to all of our members at EdPlus. It's again, one of those resources that, if we were to sell, that would go back to our membership districts. It's free to all of our 53 members, and then for other people that want to use it, there's a cost. Don't quote me on that, I think it's $365 a year, that then they can post up to MoReap anytime, and then that's about what we sell it for to other states. And then that's about what we sell it for to other states. And they, they may use it for the entire state of Connecticut. We sell it through a cooperative there and then we receive the revenue from that.
Thank you very much.
So you mentioned that you're preparing students, or not students, you just mentioned that you're training, I guess, staff and administration on how to prepare for the realities of school shootings. Are you extending that to students as well, or what does that look like?
And I have to be honest, we were very reactionary in that situation. Ours was more the response to that situation when it happened and how do we as a region? And a part of it really was about giving students voice. Because we knew, while we knew that was going to look very different in every district, what, you know, we heard the walkouts, we heard the protests. It was going to look different, but we wanted to be able to at least network about what are the best ways that we can help our kids have that voice and still keep them safe. So we've been very reactionary. There's actually a center in the state that's hooked to the Missouri School Boards Association that deals more with the proactive side of dealing with school safety and preparing students and teachers on that training. So we don't do that part. We were more the network after the fact.
Okay.
And I think the governor's task force is going to give all of us, I think, a little more information on how to deal with exactly those issues.
And I think their report's supposed to come out at the end of June, I believe.
I thought they had, I thought today was their last meeting. And I think it's up in Jeff City. I think it was at one-thirty this afternoon. So I would imagine that we should start to see some information soon.
All right, so you all are my forty-second school board meeting this year. So with that, if you're done, I will probably leave in that state for the rest of the meeting if you don't mind.
Yeah, you're going to be at more than we are this year, so.
I know, and I thought, you know, when I left the superintendency, I was kind of like, whoa, I wouldn't have somebody to court me. That was a mistake this year. It's been a lot, so.
Thanks a lot, I appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Okay, next up, St. Louis Athletic Activities Resolution.
So I tend to be the cranky one in the athletic conference. Going back a little over a year ago, there was an attempt to make a significant change within the conference. And I'm kind of like, I don't think we're following the bylaws here, folks. And so we had to go through this whole big process to get all of that done, to get where everybody kind of wanted to be. And so this year has been the first year kind of operating under those new bylaws. But very early in the football season, we had some issues, especially in a couple of districts around officials and schedulers. So nobody pretty much anymore schedules their own officials for contests. The conference actually contracts with an individual who takes care of all of that. There have been a number of news stories kind of throughout the year around the shortage of officials. A prime example was earlier this week, Monday or Tuesday across the county, that we are eighty umpires short for baseball. So a lot of things got canceled, especially freshman and JV stuff gets canceled. So just the next phase in kind of cleaning this up is that pretty much all of the districts in the conference either have already or are adopting this resolution before we get to next school year.
Have we had any problems with this group or when we've had something come up, have they worked well with us? And I guess I'm just asking, what's the general feeling that our district has in working with this group?
Like I said, we tend to be the cranky ones. In the conference, it's primarily controlled by folks in North County. So we tend to be the odd man out on some things. We had some folks with us on the bylaws piece that had to be corrected. But the conference has been a challenge going back probably ten years nearly. And it's just been this kind of evolution of things. There were a group of superintendents going back that far who thought the ADs were running a little wild on some things and tried to rein some stuff in and bring some stuff around. But kind of along the lines of Ed+, we're just a massive conference. And it just makes things a little bit more of a challenge. I mean, you're not, you're going to be hard pressed to find another conference that has as many high schools as this conference does in such a compacted area.
How is it that this resolution ties into or helps issues like you mentioned with having, being short eighty umpires? I mean, what's the connection, I mean?
It kind of doesn't. It's just affirming that everyone is a member of the conference and that then the conference is hiring the scheduler. So that the conference employs the scheduler, not individual districts.
With the executive committee, do all of those, the superintendents, principals, and athletic directors, do they all have to come from different schools or can they be from the same school?
The conference is split up into, for the leadership of the conference, the board or executive committee, if you will, it's split on regions. And the regions then have an AD, a principal, and a superintendent. And then those rotate off. So all of the regions are represented and it's cyclical so that all three don't turn over at the same time for a particular region.
But the three from one region could all be from the same school?
No.
They can't, so there's an exclusive. Okay, that's good. That's what I wanted to know.
And so as part of the development of this, then there, I see where it says that they will make sure that there's enough officiating, develop procedures for contracting and making sure all competitions have appropriate officiating. So by doing this, then I guess, and employing a, getting a scheduler, then they won't overschedule games, so there'll apparently be enough officiating.
But that's, you have to have offici- I mean.
It's the number of officials that are a little bit of the challenge. But what was, what had happened was a couple of districts felt like when there was short officials, that they were getting picked on in terms of games getting canceled. And that wasn't getting spread.
So this should help fix that, is that correct?
That's what all of the money that we've spent on attorneys through the conference say. That we need to do this to get some clarity.
Otherwise, it's like moving the yard around on the Titanic, you know?
It's, it's been an interesting two years.
It's with that heading over here.
With the conference. And really, none of that stuff, other than the officiating thing. I mean, obviously that flows down to kids with canceling of games. But all of the others have just been squabbling adults. So this is kind of to clean some of that.
Well, I hope this helps. So I guess we should get going on it, huh? It can't hurt. What say you?
We need a motion to actually get moving.
Motion to approve the Melville School District's participation in the Greater St. Louis Suburban Public Athletic and Activities Association.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. All right. We are up to policy IFB revision.
ICFB.
ICFB, sorry.
Whatever it takes.
Whatever it takes. Is anyone going to present on this or do we all know what it is? What's your thoughts?
I'll just say that was kind of a request.
Yeah.
So gaining some clarity where nonexistent.
Thank you for that.
Yeah, and get it into a policy so that there's not a question in the future. Memorialize it.
Spend time on it and revisit it every time.
Best way to do it.
Do we need to review anything in it or?
Up to you, bud. It's just.
I move to, I move to approve the revision as it is. Is that how this?
As presented.
Is that okay? As presented?
Good. Get a second.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. All right. Onto the budget amendment. I stayed away from red.
All right, got a budget amendment here. Recent adjustments would include increasing the revenue by five hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars. That's mainly based on the formula and the sales tax that we talked about in April, which came in right at the time of the board meeting. We couldn't get that in the schedules. And so that puts us at five hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollar increase to revenue. And then we go to expenses. And our bottom line on expenses is a net of seventy-two thousand dollars. And that's a combination of moving a few items, capital items from fiscal year twenty into fiscal year nineteen that are cyclical, they're like five-year replacement items. So it's, we're going to have the items in in June. So it made sense to go ahead and just put that in this year's budget. We also reduced about two hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars of other items. Other estimates like homeless transportation, electric expense, tuition, legal expense, things like that. So the net expense is seventy-two thousand. When you look at all of that, it basically nets out to a five hundred and seventeen thousand dollar net gain. And where that puts us on the cash flow summary is at the end there is twenty-nine point three percent is our forecast cash reserve percent now. And that compares to twenty-eight point zero percent when we started the year and you adjust it for the actual cash balance. So that's really where we're at for this year's, for this round of amendments. So I'm looking to gain approval to the amendments.
Any questions or statements?
Move to approve budget amendment as presented.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. I think you stay there, right? Budget development.
Okay, now to go through the updated budget and run through, update the budget from where we were at a month ago in our April board meeting and run through just the key changes. The first thing is, is that we have still a net loss of, as you'll see in the fiscal year twenty budget column, a net loss of two hundred and nine thousand dollars for the total budget. That's similar to April's number of two hundred and eighty-three thousand. It's a little bit less, but it's similar. The big change is the flip-flop between operating gain and non-operating gain. We have a significant amount more of operating gain that increased and it was pretty much offset by the non-operating side. So, you know, total is similar, but a significant increase in the operating gain. That allows for just greater staffing flexibility. And it's a, it's a big, it's always a big plus to have gains, which will show how that really sort of ties in. When you're looking at the trends of revenues and expenses, where we're left right now is our actual revenue increasing at one point seven percent and our expenses increasing at two point two. The budget now, that difference is five tenths of a percent. Expenses five tenths more than the revenue. The historical trend on that is, as you can see, one point five percent for revenue, two point three for expense. That's an eight tenths of a percent differential. So the simplistic look at this is anytime you have gains and favorable variances, it's really helping to prolong your future gains that will inevitably disappear because historically you've got, you know, that differential of expenses traditionally being higher than your revenues. So I think that's important to take into consideration. Another change is in our tax rate. Although the revenue is unaffected, it's a key benchmark to look at how much one cent of tax revenue generates. So in the April meeting, we were looking at an AV increase of around eight percent. We're really, we're really looking now, it really looks more like what we're going to have is the fifteen percent. So instead of the tax rate going down twenty-one cents that we were thinking in April, it now looks like the tax rate will decrease forty-six cents. So when you look to see how that drives the benchmark, it's really a significant change because this year, one cent of tax generates about a hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars of revenue. Next year, since the tax rates are going down, one cent will be worth almost two hundred and four thousand dollars. That's a huge change that we really just haven't seen in the past for a number of years. It's been about two thousand and eight since we had this kind of an AV change. So always, you know, up to this point, one cent was pretty much in a similar ballpark, but it's really changing quite a bit. This next slide is going to be in honor of Gene in last week's meeting. When we look initially at the cash flow summary schedules, you know, honing in on this schedule, we're going to look at, we had an enhancement to the format based on Gene's comments. So when we hone in on the bottom part of that schedule, this is the bottom part of the cash flow schedule. So previously, as you know, we just reported the standard DESI June cash balances. But at Gene's suggestion, we've added now the low cash balance. We're reporting a November number. It's important to know that the lowest balance is actually in early December. It's just more practical to report a month in number of November. So November's going to get you close, but if you really want to know the lowest number, it would really be in early December because we don't start getting our money until around December tenth. But I think that's helpful because in this case, you can see that our forecast right now for this year is at the end of June, a twenty-nine point three percent balance. But it can easily get lost that in November, we had a three percent balance. So thank you, Gene, for the suggestion. Moving to the forecast, financial statements and assumptions. There's really an infinite amount of possibilities to forecast these future financial results. Fiscal year twenty-two is an example. You can look at the revenue there. It's going down from fiscal year twenty-one. We'll look at that in a minute, but that's just an example of what you really need to know on the assumptions that are driving those numbers because of the, you know, multitude of possibilities on how you can calculate this. So because of the multiple possibilities, the forecast is really based on historical trends and the best available data at this time, but fluctuations will occur. You can look at these, we've talked a lot about in the past about fiscal year nineteen, fiscal nineteen forecast, fiscal year twenty budget. So I really want to look more at twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three for the forecast years. So you can see that, you know, we're forecasting, you know, the cash reserve percentages of twenty-nine point three percent, twenty-eight point six, twenty-six three. You see the operating gains at one fifty-three, forty-five. Deficit of a million, seven fourteen. It just shows you some of the things, and these are general guides, very, very general guides. When you look at fiscal year twenty-three, all through the footnotes and the capital schedules for all these years, we always talk about at some point, we may have to revisit the million, seven fifty transfer, but maybe not because, you know, it's a probar commitment. All it is, is just saying, it's just a discussion for the future. You know, if we didn't make the transfer and everything was exactly the same, and it won't be, but if we did, you know, then you're in a positive. But maybe you don't want to do that because it is a probar commitment. All it's saying is, that's just things for discussion, things, you know, things to be thinking about down the road. But once again, you know, these, these numbers are based on, you could have. But once again, you know, these, these numbers are based on, you could have many different types of assumptions, but ultimately, you have to pick one assumption. So I think when you look at these numbers, you just have to know what is really the assumptions driving these numbers. One of the assumptions, tax revenue. When we look at the tax revenue for those future years, we had a large increase in assessed value. We're facing a large increase this, this year, this fall. Click onto this slide real briefly. The last time we had anything close to fifteen percent, you can see all the way at the right, that sixteen point eight percent change, that was in fiscal year two thousand and eight. That was a reassessment year, just like this is. What happened in the next several reassessment years? Go down to the next yellow line item, that was a reassessment year, negative five point eight. The next reassessment year, negative three point four, negative three point three. So the bottom line is, there's no guarantee that that's what's gonna happen, but the bottom line is, if, if your real estate goes up fifteen percent, you're not, that's not gonna happen every year. So it just means we have to be careful on how we forecast this. So what I did was I put in an eight tenths of a percent increase for these three years on tax revenue. All the other revenues, it's noted in there, are assuming the one point four, five percent, and that's based on historical averages. So it's just important to read the footnotes to know how the numbers got calculated. Another footnote, talks about fiscal year twenty-two cop levy. Just to run through real briefly, there's many ways of looking at this. This is not concrete, this is not absolute, it's just one way of looking at it. Fiscal year twenty-two, there's not gonna be a cop levy because the debt's gonna be paid off. We've talked in the past about, you know, the options are that we can use that money for operations, or recurring expense capital levy, or one-time projects through GO bond. You can do combination, you can eliminate it altogether. We've had professional legal opinions that say that the levy really doesn't sunset, so it appears like there's really no overriding requirements. I think the simple way of addressing this right now is just assume, in my numbers, I'm taking out the revenue because there'll be many discussions on what to do with that. And once we get better discussions on what we're doing with that, then I'll put it in a forecast in a more accurate bucket. But for right now, I'm just not showing that. So if I'm not gonna show that, the question is, how much am I not gonna show? What is that calculation? So one way of just coming to that, because there's not a real clear-cut way of calculating this, or, or black and white guidance. So basically, after the two thousand and eight election, I just took the two thousand and nine cop levy and used that as a benchmark. That's twelve point three percent of the total levy back then. When you adjust it for the Prop R impact, it really makes the benchmark ten point nine percent of your total levy. And as you go through the years, if we still levy at ten point nine percent, our benchmark would be about forty cents this next year. We're levying forty-five cents. In recent years, we've purposely levied more than the benchmark so that we would not have a significant shortfall at the end of fiscal year twenty-two to pay off the debt. If we had not done that, we'd be facing pulling money out of the general fund to pay that final cop. So you have what we're actually putting in our budget each year of what we're levying to the cop fund, but you also have the benchmark of really how it would've progressed correspondingly with all the other tax rates and the way it moves with assessed valuations and such. So the basis is forty cents would be reversed in twenty-two, and that's about eight point two million dollars. So is that exactly what we're gonna do? Maybe, maybe not, but at least now you know what's driving that number. I think it's important when you look at that forecast to know what's, how, how we're getting that number. On the expense side, really the certified and classified salaries, we assume one step. Once again, this is sort of like the cop levy, you know, what is it going to be exactly? Well, you know, it could be more, it could be less. Right now, I've got five hundred dollars added to the base on the certified for each of those three years. I've got two hundred thousand dollars added for classified salary restructure. Maybe we do that, maybe it's more, maybe it's less, but you, you gotta pick a number. So that's, you know, that's the number for, for this particular assumption. Benefits, we've had nothing going into health insurance since twenty fifteen. It's been, it's been flat. So I wanted to start ramping that up slightly. So you can see the health insurance increases at two percent, then two point eight, and three point seven. The operating expense is based on historical trends of two point three percent. Capital's based on the five-year plan, debt's based on the actual pay. So by reading those footnotes, you'll have a much better idea of what's driving those forecast numbers. And if we change assumptions, or if, you know, all these other changes that, you know, you see just in our yearly budget amendments, fluctuations will occur, but this is how these numbers are coming about. I think that's important. The final thing that I've got for tonight is the classified salary schedules. The actual pay schedules are on a file attachment on your E-boards. This is just a summary schedule of what the impact is of those pay schedules. Most of the pay schedules have not changed, are the same step one through sixteen rates. The only pay schedules that changed are these job duties listed up here, these eight. And of, so of our entire classified staff, these are the job duties that got restructured to increase some rates. That impacts two hundred and ninety-nine of our staff, which is fifty-four percent of our classified staff. It also is an increase of a hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars, which was the same number quoted in the April package of, you know, if you dig into your April package, there's a detail of classified salaries, and it's, that's what's listed. It's also listed in that blue packet that I've given you guys. If you were to look at the expense page, it's in there, there's a footnote that talks about classified salaries and assuming one step increase and the hundred, actually it said a hundred and ninety thousand dollar salary restructure due to rounding. So that's the same assumption that we had back in April. A hundred and sixty thousand dollars of this increase, or really eighty-five percent of the entire increase, is going to jobs that have a step one that's less than twelve dollars an hour. So the majority of this entire increase is hitting our lower paid classified staff. We would need about another hundred thousand dollars to throw at the schedule to, to get everybody, so that everybody on step one is up to twelve dollars an hour. And that's something I'm sure that, you know, with our future budgets, we've got money for restructure for classified each year, that I'm sure that that will be addressed in the future. Overall, with a step plus this restructure, the classified pay increases three point seven percent. And there's no consolidations of pay schedules this year like there were last year, it's just a simple, you know, here's your rates, now here's your new rates. Like I said, it's only for these eight, eight pay schedules. Any questions on what I've presented?
I think you must've done a pretty thorough job. Was any questions? Thank you.
I think we need to approve, somewhere on there, there's something about approving that.
Move to approve classified pay schedules and move employees a step for fiscal year twenty.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thanks. Alright, next item is criteria for performance excellence.
Where's the other Mr. Smith?
I know he's, I'm a one-man show tonight, so.
Should we hold off and do this the next meeting?
No, no, we'll try to run through this pretty quickly. I know we're, we're at the end of the agenda. So this particular month, we are gonna be looking just at a quick view of measurement, analysis, and knowledge management. So each month, we just kinda quickly remind, whether it's for audience members or for you, what is the purpose of this? And it's really to help the organization answer three questions, and that's how well is the organization doing? How do you know? And what should we be doing to drive change? So that's the framework for which the, the conversations are always gonna be about. So this particular month, a lot of the questions are gonna be about tracking data, information, measurement, analysis of those things. So I'll try to, you can always refer back to this particular presentation. Next year, we're gonna take a deeper dive into each of these components, the criteria that we talked about this year, this was to be a, kind of a broad overview. Next year, we'll be doing a deeper dive into each of the individual pieces. So just to be able to bring everybody more up to speed with, and get kind of our own analysis with where we are at. So the first particular one is, and you can see, it's the subbullets underneath when you're looking at questions. How do you track data on, for daily operations and for overall organizational performance? We have certain pieces in place. School dude, which does work orders. We also, it can also do transportation, it's, we also use it for pieces of that. Are also our dashboard systems, are ways for us to be able to kind of track the data, and school information systems are where we house our data. So with regards to measurement and analysis and just knowledge management, those are the pieces that really take on that first particular piece of just organizational structures. So we also look at comparative data, you know, how are you, how are we doing against others, you know, other schools, other districts? And so there are a lot of pieces that we have access to. Dr. Ziegler earlier mentioned that EdPlus is a, you know, they capture a lot of, a lot of information, and so we can glean some off of that. We also use things like SIS and Five, Forecast Five, which has a platform called Five Site. And Five Site is where we get a lot of our comparative schools. So when we see our principals up here doing comparative school data, this is the platform in which they're getting it. You'll also find it a lot within our school improvement plans as well. Where do we get that data? We get that data specifically from Five Site and other informational pieces. So there are certain things that you'll see tonight that I think we do a pretty robust job of, and there are other pieces that are gaps, things that we certainly need to be able to improve upon. Next, we have our voice of the customer, our market data, our information. And so a lot of that revolves around communication. And we have a communications department who does a really very good job of trying to get information from our teachers, from our community, from our administrators, from, from any number of people that are involved with our community. We also do things, as you all know, like board listening sessions from our teachers, and we do a professional development needs assessment. And we use that information to be able to plan out the next year's building information, building professional development in cooperation with administrators and professional development representatives. So to listen to it is one piece of it, to use it is another piece of that. And so we always need to be doing a better job of using the information we have and being a collaborative organization. So that will always be something that we will just continue to try to get better and better and better at. Next, we have what happens when we have to make a quick change, when there's rapid or unexpected changes that occur? And this is an area that with a larger organization, I think it takes a little bit more to kind of turn the ship around a little bit. We're working on that piece. Part of it is really just a communication piece and getting all the parties together when something changes direction drastically, whether it's, you know, a directive from DESI, you know, a change in law, change in policy, change in procedure. Those are where we typically see it. Can also happen in other areas, whether that's changes to HR, changes to board policy, changes in finance, you know? So when we have change, it's, that's a gap where we just continue to need to work on that. This particular one, our performance and our capabilities, a lot of that does drive itself around school improvement plans. And so that's certainly a part of it, the dashboards are certainly a part of that. We need to be communicating what is our performance from the district. And our capabilities is where I think we probably, you know, it's, I would say it's a gap in the sense of being able to define what is our capability? You know, I think we've really made some improvements in this very short time that, that I've been the district, I've seen a lot of improvements, not because of me, just because I think the district is working collaboratively, working in a good direction on a lot of things. And I think we've been able to reap some, some benefits and some acknowledgements and some awards through that process. But there's always more to be able to do. So really figuring out, what's our capability? What can we do as opposed to, oh, we can't do that because we've never been able to? Well, getting to the why is really important. Next, we have our, how do you project your organizational performance in the future? And this is one where we have financial things, you will see that, you just approved pieces of that. So those are things that are probably easier to be able to see. Academically is where I would say we probably have a, a bit of a gap, although we've tried to do some purchase services for pieces to be able to look at improvements and try to be able to predict the future gains that we would have with, whether it's reading, whether it's math, whether it's ACT, any of those types of things, we are continuing to look at those pieces. It's an area that we still will continue to work on. Our findings, you know, to really develop our priorities for that continuous improvement, we have some examples where I think we've really improved, social, emotional learning, to try to be able to address in those pieces. We do look at things, obviously, on a frequent basis. Some things, you know, are more annual as we have to be able to report them. That also comes from, you know, committee reports that you see and actions that some of your committees have to be able to take on an annual basis. So our findings, to be able to develop those priorities, a lot of that revolves around the strategic plan. And that's where a lot of that is really fed from and fed into. The quality of organizational data, you know, I've, I've heard it said time and time again that the data that goes into the system is only going to be as good as the data that you'll get out of the system. And so the date, we have done a lot of review over the last couple of years of data, whether it's of work data, whether it's of performance data, to try to be able to make sure that our data is accurate. Because we're responsible to DESI for a lot of those pieces as well, whether it's attendance data, whether it's, you know, whatever those pieces are, financial data. We continue to, you know, make sure that our data processes are accurate for reporting purposes. We do also have, you know, a newly developed data department with the work of Andrew Coonert and Steve Baronic and Jamie Lee, who really have been able to do some good, good things. They're just within the first few months. Andrew's position was there, Steve's position was there, Steve's our SIS specialist coordinator. Adding Jamie to the mix has been really, it's been an add for us because it's been able to make us look at things that we just kinda didn't look at before. So it's part of that cleaning up of data as well. Last couple of pieces that we have, how do you ensure the availability of organizational data? We have SIS then, we have SIS. We have a lot of platforms that have data. Even one thing that I would say we are, is pretty data-rich. We do have a lot of data now that we can put our hands on. It's always gonna be, what do you do with it? And that's, that's the challenge, I think, of any organization. We do also try to find ways in which to be able to communicate that out, and that such as things like the Melville Messenger are all-hand summaries. But again, you know, is it a gap? I think it depends on who you talk to. Some people will say, I didn't know. Well, you can put things out fifteen different ways, and if they don't connect with one of those fifteen different ways, then they're gonna say, well, it's a gap. So we need to continue to work on ways to be able to find ways to be able to communicate to all people, you know, and find the method. You know, is it a newspaper? Is it a website? Is it a social media platform? Is it mouth, you know, is it, you know, person-to-person? This one is about managing organizational knowledge, and so a lot of this really, when you look at what do we do, it's an onboarding experience. So when we're trying to do things like new teacher orientation, we're instructional leadership, we're trying to be able to build capacity. And one of the things that we've recognized, even just from a professional development standpoint, is that when we have people, we've done initiatives and, you know, you see them through, and then if you don't continue to feed it and plan for it annually, then you can start to create gaps within a teaching staff or a classified staff. And so one of the things we're really trying to double back on this year is to really say, what are the things that are really important for an elementary teacher, or a middle school teacher, or a high school teacher, or a preschool teacher, or other, you know, support staff? What are the things they really need to be able to know and to make sure that we're planning for that? Sharing best practices is an area we need to improve in. We do have a plan in place, at least in June, to start some of these conversations with all of our building principals to highlight one of the best practices that came out of their school improvement plan. So that is a plan that we have moving forward. It's not a plan that we, we just didn't talk about. And so some of the things that you will see is, it's just really not part of the conversation. So we're working on this particular piece. And I believe, if I'm not mistaken, yeah, the last piece here is using your organizational knowledge and your resources to embed learning. That's being intentional, and that's creating a process. And that's an area where, you know, I mentioned before, it's a bit of a gap. And there are things that we can do better, and we are working towards putting systems in place to be able to make sure that we don't have some of these gaps. And then as always, we end with the last particular slide. So this one was number four. Over the next couple of months, we'll hit five and six. Results will be a deeper dive when we get into year two of this, but we'll, after six, we'll come back to. we'll come back to one, and we'll kind of just, we'll go through a little bit more of a, of an intentional piece of that, that process. We're still working on, how do we, how are we going to communicate that? Because me trying to squeeze all this in in like a seven-minute presentation, it, it's a very broad overview. So we'll work on our, our methodology behind that. That's all I have tonight. So do you have any questions about measurement, analysis, or knowledge management? Okay. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Okay, we didn't have anyone sign up for patron comments for non-agenda items, so we are ready to go to closed session.
Motion to enter a closed session meeting for the purpose of reading of minutes of previous meetings and corrections and approval of same and other items under the Missouri revised statutes 610.021 subsections 1 through 21 and 610.022 subsections 1 through 6. Hiring, firing, disciplining, or promoting particular employees, statute 610.021. Preparation for negotiations with employee groups, 610.021 subsection 9.
Okay.
Oh, roll call. Tori?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Kevin? Larry?
Yes.
Peggy?
All right. We're good. Thank you.
Sorry about that.
No problem.